As required by section eighty-four dash one, four, one, two, subsection eight of Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the Openshooting Act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Before we have roll call, I'd just like to welcome our guests this evening and everyone who's part come to participate in our meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
George Klein.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Kevin Alexi.
Here.
Clay Anderson, absent.
Could we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Mark to approve the agenda. Could we have a roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Kevin to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the city council meeting from July the seventh. There are minutes from the community development city descent advisory review committee, otherwise known as community development, community betterment, which was held July first and minutes from the planning commission meeting held June ninth and July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. There is also the monthly treasures report for May of this year, twenty twenty-five, and monthly water report and the fire department membership report. At present time, there are forty-three active members, so anyone in the public is, wants to do some really good, really good community service, please see the volunteer fire department. Any questions about any of the items in the consent agenda? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, Deb Cotier from Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation.
Good evening, Deb Cotier, four-two-eight North Shattan Avenue. We got a spiked half a dozen hailstones this afternoon. I don't know what the rest of town got, but I got my car in the garage like two minutes before the hail, so. Must be a little night today. You should have received a written report from me as well as a semi-annual report that I sent to the council on our use of the ALB eight forty grant given to N N D C a couple of years ago. I have two pending requests for assistance, but no actual applications on either one of them in my office at this point, as far as that business assistance category, if you will. We have continuing effort to finish up and we have launched our website. And now tomorrow morning, I'll have the first of I imagine several sessions of administrative training on upkeep on the website. Encourage you to take a look if you haven't. I included the web address there and note to you. Dr. Cooper has decided to come on the board of directors. We have, we maintain a spot on our board for Shattan State College. And Dr. Patterson had filled that role. And when he left, before he left, I asked if he had any recommendations and he said he would want to leave that up to the next president. So when I was up to her office to introduce myself, we visited a little bit about a couple of things that I need her help with as it relates to the workforce development effort. But she said, you know, at least during the interim period, she would be happy to fill that role. And our board only meets every other month. And so she's going to come on the board and, and fill that role. Like I said, at the very least through the interim period. So we'll see what happens after that, if she is asked to stay on or how that'll work out. But the other thing I was going to mention is, just a reminder that the Heartland Expressway Board met again, of course, this month. And we are finalizing the details for the annual meeting, which is Thursday, the twenty-first of August. Love to have you attend. That's in alliance and it's planned over the noon hour specifically so that we can catch folks at least for the most part over their noon hour and not hold them up for the whole day or something or, or take an evening out of the deal. So the gentleman from Texas, who is the head of the Ports to Plains Alliance, will be our keynote. And Doug Leaf Green, who is our highway commissioner, is working to try to convince the director to come out from the Department of Transportation. I've not heard if he's been more successful than me. I've not been able to get, get a return email from her. So at the very least, we will have updates from folks relative to where we are with that. And then we continue to, to work on filling all of the slots for our career development day. A couple of folks that have been traditionally very helpful are not going to be able to help us this year. So we're going to have to kind of pivot on a couple of the categories. And so if you, as a council member, or you know of a career field where you would like to suggest we have the students visit, let me know. Because we're, like I said, we're going to be switching over a couple of those sessions that we've done in the past two years and, and maybe do a little different look of it this year. And I think that's all I had in my report.
Any questions for Deb? That meeting, it was really nice last year when you met here in Shattan. And it's really informative. And if I can squeeze the time, I'd like to go, but I don't see how it develops.
Well, I'd, I'd love to have any of you attend. I will be driving down. I'll need to be there a little earlier than when the thing starts, but you're welcome to ride with me.
And it does take a little more than an hour, I think.
I think it will as well. We try to keep it to an hour.
But, yeah.
But yeah. But we're hopeful that, you know, in, in this regard, some more folks from the City of Alliance, maybe we'll be able to attend in terms of businesses and, and folks who are interested in the Heartland, the world of, of road building. And I got an email today. The Senate Appropriations Committee is moving ahead with their appropriations bill without any markup, as they call it, or any, any chance for the senators to change things. If, if the, the request that Senator Fisher put forward is in the original bill, that's good news. If it's not, and she wanted to make the case for it at the committee meeting, that's not such good news. So we'll have to wait and see how that turns out. We generally don't know when Congress is going to act on a specific piece of legislation much more than, you know, forty-eight hours before it comes up in committee. So we'll keep our eye on it.
I did have a chance to peruse your, your website, or the website.
Yes.
And watch some of the videos. Yeah, I thought it was really good.
Good, thank you. Well, we'll continue to fix a couple of things I was mentioning to Kevin. If you notice, there's a picture from a hospital operating room that apparently is fairly dated. And we're going to try to, Sydney told me she could give me a little better picture than that. They thought it was like about nineteen nineties technology. And so that's one of those, you know, things like that change so quickly and, and people just brush by it and don't pay any attention. But if, if you have a brand new one and, and you want to start with it being pretty current, so. We'll take a look at that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item C on the agenda.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-four, move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for resolution number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash fifty-four, which is to authorize placement of stop signs in a crosswalk between Pine Street and West Hills Terrace and West Eighth Street. And we're kind of open for discussion. I know we have some comments from the, some council members. If there's some public who want to make some comments first, I'm certain, welcome me to come up and address us.
My name is Candice Smollett and my husband and I live at eight-eight-eight West Eighth. We've been up there for twenty-seven years, so I think we've kind of seen most of the highs and lows of that area. I guess our biggest thing is we would really not like to see that many stop signs put up there. I'd rather see a crosswalk in front of where the hospital staff going back and forth. And as I say, and with my shot being right across the street, I know what it is to have a crosswalk. If we could do something like that, I think it would be a lot better, a little bit more deterrent. And if we could possibly get Chief Hickstein to possibly even have some officers just sit up there a little bit, I know they do it on Maple Street, do little deterrence, and I think it'd slow people down just a little bit, too. And coming off Centennial Drive, that's a pretty good dip there. Nobody takes that too fast. And if they do in the wintertime, they scratch their bottoms or they end up in my yard. So that's kind of where we'd like to see it. I don't, I don't under, I guess my biggest thing is I don't understand why you would want to do stop signs at Sixth and at, or at, well, yeah, at West Hills Terrace and at Pine Street. Pine Street, one, it's pretty much just Prairie Pines people. Most of them are pretty slow anyhow. They do stop no matter what. And West Hills Terrace, there's already two stop signs right there. I don't, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm just kind of looking at it for as long as we've been up there. I think the crosswalk would be your best bet. And if you had to have flashing ones, because I know at the college they have that, catch their attention a little bit. And like I said, if we could get some officers up there, let some people know they can't go, you know, Mach five, because we've seen that, too. They come off, they come off the highway and it's like, ooh, yeah, let's go just as fast as we can. And there's enough cars there, somebody's going to get hurt eventually. I think if we could just do the crosswalk, maybe have the hospital put in a little bit more parking so that they're not on the street itself. I think that's also some deterrent because sometimes you don't see the people coming out of that area very well. And especially in the summer when there's more people in and out, they're wearing light colored clothing. I don't think you can see them as quite as well. But that's just our opinion that way. And I know my husband talked to Mark earlier today. So he's kind of, he caught George's attention. So anything else?
Good. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public wants to speak?
I'm Greg Price. I live out by the state park. So I'm not a resident of Shattan. But I do own property in Shattan. I agree totally with Candy about the number of stop signs. But I worked up to the college for three years and we had those flashing pedestrian lights. They were wonderful. We never had an instance where some student almost got hit because that gets their attention. You know, the flashing, they're solar powered, so it's not like we have to run a power line to them or anything. So that would be my, my only suggestion there on that. And they do need a crosswalk because I travel that Eighth Street a lot. And sometimes you don't see those people coming across. But it's, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, noon, and, and four-thirty is when they're, they're going through there. Too many stop signs, you're going to get people, California stops through them, so. But that, those flashing lights really did work at the campus if you'd want to consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Couple of council members, Mark and Shane, have both been, got in contact with me specifically about the one that proposed stop sign on Eighth and Pine. So if they want to express their views on that, I don't know the exact length of feet,
but I think Mark measured it off. But I, I just, that, that one at Pine, I, I feel you're, I, when I drove it, I feel I already forgot about the stop sign by the time I got to where the crosswalk was. I don't think that would do anything myself, my, my opinion. The, talking to some other people that have businesses up there, coming from the other way, West Hills, they do say some people come off of the highway a little fast. I don't know if it's going into the hotel or not. But i- if we did do a stop sign, I, I'd rather have it up at the, that was at West, West Hills, along with the crosswalk. What did, what did you come up with?
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with Shane. I don't think we need the, the stop sign down there at Pine. Just doing a little testing in a couple of different vehicles, starting from a, a stop going to twenty-five miles an hour. About a hundred and fifty feet, I was going twenty-five miles an hour. So it's about twelve-hundred feet from Pine Street to where the crosswalk is. So I don't think that would do much for us. George reached out to me today, which spawned me talking to quite a few other people. I talked to eight different hospital employees that park over in the, the parking across the street, two business owners or managers and a couple of the, well, George and another resident down the street. We had one that didn't want a stop sign whatsoever. Everyone at the hospital absolutely wanted the crosswalk and didn't really care one way or the other if there was a stop sign. They weren't sure if it would do any good or not. But they weren't opposed to it and the business owners were not opposed to a stop sign either. But I didn't have anyone that said they absolutely had to have a stop sign there. It is about two hundred feet from where they would be stopping in getting to the crosswalk. So legitimately, someone could stop at the stop sign and still be up to twenty-five miles an hour by the time they got to the, the crosswalk. So my thought was if we do kind of what Craig suggested with the crosswalk and some flashing lights, contact the hospital two months down the road and see if things are working well. If they're not working well, put in some, some stop signs or something else. But that's just my, my thought on it. And it doesn't bother me one way or the other. It doesn't affect me one way or the other, I should say. So I, just talking with people that have some skin in the game and it affects them. So that's kind of where they, what they said.
When we had the agenda meeting, I, I expressed my idea about on Eighth and Pine. I was basically against it. And I did a couple of times, I went up there and I stopped, you know, and then I went on. The second time I went up there, I stopped and looked around and I was looking for Shane on his deck, but he wasn't there. And that's my idea, so.
We, we have an expert in, in the field sitting in the audience. Yeah, I mean, isn't that your area of expertise in Colorado? Would, do you have any input?
Dana Klein, I live in Estes Park, Colorado. And yes, I manage parking and transit for the town of Estes Park within Public Works. And one thing that we've found is the rapid flash beacons that you're referring to with the, I call it the beg button, but you actuate it to get that signaled across. There's grant money available for that. I don't know how, where you guys are on grants, but, or the speed that you want to work on that. But I know that there are grants available for that. And we just did a huge project with the Federal Highway Administration where through our town, we have two roads that are highways that are traveled by pedestrians a lot. And we have found that the, that the two signalizations that we had to do where we couldn't put a signal at full, you know, the three balls signals, we were able to put rapid flash beacons and it made a difference. It slows people down just enough that they, they know that there's something up there. So that all comes down to signal timing in my, in my mind. You have to kind of figure out what that rapid flash, what that timing should be for that crosswalk. And there's obviously a lot of data for how fast people walk and things. But, yeah, we found them to be very successful.
So, so the grants that you alluded to, are those state of Colorado grants or are they federal?
I got the feeling ours came through federal.
Okay.
But I'm not sure where those programs are in the current administration. If, if all those are available still.
I, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that maybe we should modify the resolution to drop all the stuff about Pine Street and then just do the stop sign. And then if we can get at Eighth and West Hills Terrace, that's the two-way stop now and convert that to a four-way stop. And then see if we can apply for some grants and with the idea that they press a button when they want to cross and it lights up and, and it might just eliminate that need to stop at Eighth and.
I know, I know those lights.
Hills Terrace.
Those lights at the college, they're not the push type, but they just flash.
All the time.
All the time.
Solar.
I don't know, I don't know if.
And those are solar, I assume.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I think the rapid flash may be a better option because then, you know, it involves some pedestrian responsibility on that cross and requires you to do a little bit of looking, but I may be completely wrong based on that area because I'm not familiar with it. But you may be able to work the grant with the hospital in some way, too. That's my two and a half cents for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. One other thing the hospital did say that, that it really wasn't the, the speed that they were concerned about or if there was a stop sign or not. It was the cars parked on either side of the street, just like Candy alluded to, that, you know, coming across there. So they have taken some precautions by saying that no one can park on the side of the street, so many feet from, from the crosswalk where people cross. That's just a word of mouth through the hospital itself, but there's no signage or anything of that nature. But that was the, more of a concern to the hospital employees than having a stop sign.
Can I ask how, how expensive is a stop sign or a crosswalk? How expensive is a crosswalk sign compared to stop signs?
Well.
I'll answer that for you. The, the signs and the things that we had proposed in our resolution is about thirty-five hundred dollars. Now, the flashing lights that we looked up, that was similar to what the college is, is right around the twelve thousand. Now, I'm not familiar with any of the grants and we can definitely look into those things to see. But that's, that's what they are per sign.
So the crosswalk sign that we have on Main Street?
That crosswalk sign alone is a little over five hundred dollars.
Okay, now, why can't we start out with something like that? And if it doesn't deter anything, then go to a next step up. But if, I think if you just do a crosswalk sign itself, people are going to start to pay attention to it. I mean, you guys know I'm a business owner. If we kind of look at this in the business aspect, don't you usually kind of start small? And if there's still a problem, then you start to advance some monies. But to me, to go to stop signs a block off of the highway, you're not getting deterred a whole lot.
The, the reason why the city staff recommended that is every place that we have these crosswalks that are mid-block have stop signs at the ends of each of those blocks. And that's a way for people to understand that there's other traffic involved. And that's why we were suggesting that as far as a recommendation for this.
And I guess I'm looking at it for the aspect of, people know you have a hospital right there. There are signs next to the highway, there are signs that are saying it's a hospital area. I, I don't think people are stupid that way. If you, if you know there's a hospital there, you put a crosswalk sign or a couple of crosswalk signs, people are going to pay attention to it. And eventually they will figure it out. And again, if we could have some officers on occasion, just sit up there, deter. It's amazing how much, if an officer's up there, that deters the speeding pretty bloody fast. Because they don't want the speeding tickets. And I've seen them on Maple Street, I've seen them on even further down on Eighth Street near the, the, next to Wilson Park and stuff. I guess to me, really, start small, work your way up if you have to.
Tom used to mention that it's about five hundred dollars for that portable sign.
The portable sign?
Can, can a solar, you have street barricades that have a yellow light on top. Are those, some of those solar powered?
The, the, the barricades that we have are solar powered.
How long do those last?
That just depends on how many times they get ran over. Battery pack that have some of them that have to be changed.
Battery packs charged by solar, so.
Yep.
I was just in Hill City and they had, they had one, I mean, they have, they had several of those signs, but they had one that had the solar pack on it.
Mm-hmm.
And the solar pack costs.
I, I have no idea on the barricades themselves unless Janet, you had any idea on the, on the barricades? I, I don't know, George, that question.
And I guess my other thing is too, also in the wintertime, when we do get amounts of snow, it would be kind of nice to be able to move those, get it cleared off, and then put them back where they need to be at. Because there again, I, I'm right across the street. I, I deal with that crosswalk every single day. And that's why I'm just saying, if we could start out small, then work our way up if we have to, rather than have some big expenses.
You make some very good points. We're just making our recommendations from the staff from what we've seen. Just even like the one that's been out here, Janet and Rick can probably attest. How many times have we replaced that since that's been put out there? Three times? And there's.
It's hit by the cars. In the wintertime, we take it away because it doesn't stay there. Kids move it.
Yep. It, it's just got some variables. There's some pluses and minuses with anything that we do. But we do whatever the council would like us to do on this situation and, and allow them to, to make it what they feel is best for our citizens.
So Janet, thank you, Candy. So Janet, as far as the crosswalk signage, letting people know that there's a croc, crosswalk, is there specific footages that they have, that needs to be from the crosswalk?
What our intention was with the signs, what the, the cost that Tom gave you was not only for the stop signs, it was for six stop signs because we already have two in place on West Hills Terrace. And it was for two crosswalk ahead signs and for posts. So it wasn't just the, the signs themselves. So it was for multiple signs and it was for the posts. And it was also for painting the crosswalk on the ground. So there's multiple things there involved. If you take out the signs down on Pine Street, that would have been four of the signs. If you want to keep the two signs on West Hills Terrace, because there's already two stop signs there, that would eliminate four of the signs. And we would keep the two signs for telling people that there are crosswalks ahead. Those crosswalks ahead signs need to be at least a hundred and fifty feet in advance of the crosswalk. Well, where that crosswalk is, we can't just plop those signs down a hundred and fifty feet in advance of that crosswalk because there are other obstacles involved. So already talked to, coming from the west, I've already talked to Eric Landon because can't, where we wanted to put it, can't put it there because there's bushes right in the way and a tree, so you can't see it. So it would be almost right in front of his clinic and he was fine with that. On the other side, coming from the, from the east, it would be just on the other side of the alley, coming off of Centennial and then, and the alley there. So there's no obstructions there. So those, where those two signs would be, telling people that there are crosswalk ahead. And then the two stop signs on West Hills Terrace. That's what our thought process was for those. On Pine Street, we had talked about replacing the yield signs with stop signs and then also putting in two new stop signs. If you want to nix that intersection, that's fine. There already is a stop sign on Centennial Drive as you come down the hill on that T intersection. So that one would stay the same, the way it is in our thought process. But as we spoke at the last council meeting, the other two areas in town that have crosswalks at mid-block are here on the two-hundred block of Main. And they have controlled. crosswalks at mid-block are here on the two hundred block of Main, and they have controlled intersections at both ends. And the college up on Main between Tenth and Twelfth, and again, those are controlled intersections at both ends. So what we were trying to do was do the same thing, was control the intersections where you have a mid-block crossing, where people are not used to having a mid-block crossing. Most motorists know that people are typically crossing at intersections. So we're trying to alert the motorist that you have somebody crossing where typically they wouldn't be crossing.
How wide is the crossing?
A typical crosswalk is between four and five feet wide.
Can you make it larger?
You could, but I don't know that that would improve your possi-, you know, your possibility of people.
I'm just looking at it that if people are parking where the hospital parking is, they sometimes go straight across, but they also go on the concrete where the drive-ups are on each side. Can you make it a little bit wider?
The hospital has requested to have the crosswalk at their cutout on either side of the street.
Street.
So they are making the request where they're telling their employees that they will be crossing the street. So that's where we are going to make the crosswalk at their request.
Right.
So the, so, so if we didn't do those four stop signs down there, do you think that, I mean?
That would cut, that would cut the cost about in half, not quite, but about, because you're, you're, we're paying for the paint on the street. I, I am completely against this little portable sign out here on the street, because we find that sign everywhere in town. And I'm, and I'm telling you everywhere in town. People think it's funny to heist that sign and take it wherever they wanna put it. We find it on roofs, we find it all over town. And, and they'll, we'll find this one all over town also. So I'm completely against that one. And if, if our goal is to make the crossing on that street safe for the pedestrian, then I'd say we do something different. It'll be the newest one to take and remove and take it wherever.
Right. I think, I think looking at.
I mean, I, I, down the road, trying to get a grant for a lit crossing sign, I'm all for it, but that's not gonna solve our problem day one.
Right.
Could we, for the time being, nix all of the cro-, the stop signs? Just have our two crosswalk ahead signs?
You can do whatever you want, Kevin.
Is that?
Well, that's, that's kinda what I was getting at, and then if it becomes an issue, uh, you know, for the hospital employees talking to, uh, their supervisor or the CEO, then obviously we need to rethink what, what we did. Um, that was.
I mean, you're, you're, what we're trying to do is make it safe for those people that are crossing the street.
For sure.
Being in a crosswalk, I can tell you, being out here, as I told you at the last council meeting, I have stood there and looked the driver in the eye. I am in the crosswalk, you were supposed to stop for me, and they look at me and drive over top of me just about. So I.
Do, doing, uh, doing a lot, some street signage and painting myself on the streets, um, not in Shatteren, but elsewhere, uh, I know mid-block crosswalks are horrible.
They are horrible.
Um, because the, the motorist isn't thinking of a crosswalk. So I, I feel that's where you came up with the stop signs.
That's exactly why we suggested the stop signs, because at least they're at a slower speed. I know that the people coming off that highway can be at forty miles an hour by the time they get in front of that hospital. Not everyone, but some people can be.
Right.
Those coming from the other direction, not as much, but coming off that highway, definitely.
Which then is an enforcement issue.
Yes, it is an enforcement issue.
I, I appreciate the, to get on, kinda going forward, appreciate the comments about not having any stop signs, but I, I would really like to propose a motion to take out from the, to change the resolution to have the stop signs at the north side and south side of West A- Street and West Hills Terrace, as it was written. But those other, the.
Eliminate them on Pine.
They eliminate the other four bullet points, which are replacing the yield sign with the stop sign on the east side of Pine Street where it intersects with A- Street. The north side of West A- Street where it intersects with Pine Street, and replacing the yield sign with a stop sign the west side of Pine Street where it intersects with West A- Street. And the south side of West A- Street where it intersects with Pine Street, so it's like to get rid of all that and have the stop signs.
So we would be adding two stop signs and the two.
And West Hills Terrace, yeah.
And the two yield signs ahead, which aren't part of that resolution. We were going to do those because they're not an enforcement issue.
So you'd wanna motion to amend, George?
Yeah.
Or you could make the motion to amend.
I made a motion if I could.
I second that.
Okay, I made a motion and Shane seconded it.
You have no more questions for me?
I, could, could we, I mean, not in the motion, but just food for thought, is just maybe, maybe look into, uh, the flashing lights too?
The grants.
Yes.
We, we can sure do that, yes.
Couldn't we not do something like Safeway does with the stop signs in their crosswalk to get into their store? They have one stop sign for the people on.
In the middle of the street?
No, it's not, that's on private property.
Private property.
Yeah.
See, I'm just, I'm just asking.
And I don't think everybody stops at that one. Okay, any discussion about the amendment?
So your amendment would remove the stop signs at Pine?
At Pine Street. It keeps the ones that make, make West Hills Terrace. Instead of a two-way stop, it would be a four-way stop.
And rem, and keeping the yield signs at Pine, yield signs?
Yeah, yeah, just leave the thing alone, don't even. Uh, there's been comments that people don't like yield signs, but I don't think they hurt anything really. Maybe they do for, but. So, any other questions about the amendment to the resolution?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes. Doesn't really matter at that point.
Okay. With that, the resolution has been changed. Any discussion about the resolution as changed? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your comments to those who commented.
Um.
I'll introduce Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash fifty-five and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for Resolution number twenty, twenty-five dash fifty-five, which is to approve the application of Shatteren Natural Food Co-op for community development betterment funds in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. Anyone have any questions about that? Um, this is kind of a result of a, they initially applied for some of the high, uh, pace ke- keno funds, um, but Shatteren Food Co-op, while they're orig- organizes a nonprofit with the Nebraska, they have not been approved by IRS because that application has never been done. And the rules that the, the procedure that the city has developed allowed them to apply for community development funds in their own rights, so. And I, we have monies in the community development funds and I think the Natural Food Co-op is a a good addition to this, our community. Anyone have any other questions?
No.
If not, could we have roll call, please? Oh, gee. Oh, oh, you wanna make some comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not Una, I'm a sorry replacement.
Roxy Graham Marsky, representing for Natural, Natural Food Co-op. Una Taylor, who's been kind of your spokeswoman, if you will, was not able to come tonight, so you're stuck with me. If you have any questions, I will do my best, but again, I'm not an Una. She's one of a kind.
Um, you know, since, since we're mentioning, um, the replacement of older inefficient refrigerators, maybe you could update us exactly what, kinda what they're gonna look like, or?
Or just like, yeah, or maybe just let the public know.
Yeah.
What's, what's, so you're, so you're replacing, uh, a large freezer?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two refrigerators?
Yes, mm-hmm, without the freezer.
Refrigerator freezer combo.
Yes, mm-hmm. So those two refrigerators and the refrigerator freezer would be for our back stock. So that would be basically anything that we don't fit in the front for display use. You know, and so you order, you have additional items that aren't gonna be on display. Sometimes you just have limited space, and so you wanna make sure that you have it attractive for people to purchase it, and so anything additional needs to be in the back. We've been very limited with what we have in the back as far as, um, especially energy effi- efficient. Some of our items, um, are placed in a, like a, a borrowed, like one of our members brought us a borrowed refrigerator freezer that works enough to like keep some of the nuts in and the seeds and those kinda things, the fruits to keep them fresher. Um, but it's, it's not really the best setup. We've made it work, we've made a lot of things work.
Right.
Um, but yes, we, we have a really good board now that is really kind of has some visionaries on it for what we could become. And times are tough as far as, um, being able to have enough funds to go forward with some of these appliances and the electrical that we'd like to do eventually. Um, we, we really have some great plans, but, um, we just have to get there. So, yeah, it, um, it'd be a big help to us. Be kinda neat if you guys would come over and see the co-op. I don't know how many of you have been in the co-op, but, um, it's a really unique place.
I've been probably in the first fifteen feet.
That's it, yeah, it's a shame.
We just stayed in there what, last month.
Were you? Okay, good. So you've been in there.
Yeah.
Are you? Okay, good, yeah. I'm there on Monday, so if you don't come out on a Monday, I don't get to see you. But yeah, we're really a unique place and, um, we're trying to keep our niche. It seems like what's happened is, uh, as the health food, uh, movement catches momentum, you see our larger stores, you know, also carrying some of those same products. And yet they'll carry them for a while and then they won't, and so we're trying to provide what people need. If we don't have it in the store, we can try to get it. So we do have a unique, um, way of providing what the community needs. If we know something that somebody really wants, then we'll have it on hand, and you can't do that in your bigger stores. You're just kind of left up to whatever they want to provide for you for however long they wanna provide it to you. So, yeah, we, we're in the process of hopefully trying to, uh, we have another grant that we were very graciously awarded that's gonna hopefully help us, um, maybe put a down payment on the building and even get that building purchased, which would be exciting for us. That's, I should not say that that's a reality, that's just a possibility that we're trying to, and that's why we put the electrical on hold. Um, because they recommended that we don't do anything like that to a building we don't own. So that's why we're waiting on the electrical, and that's why the energy efficiency appliances would help us, because we're kind of at our capacity as far as like having any additional refrigeration without the electrical being updated. But that energy efficiency, the newer ones, not only are we not having to pay to fix them when they break, which is expensive, but we also have that a little bit of additional electrical capacity that we can work with. So, cause we would like that back area. I don't know if any of you have been in the back area, but we would like to, we have lots of ideas for that, of how that could be kind of a community kitchen. Places that we do more of our workshops. We've done a couple of workshops. We did a, a sour bread um, making homemade, homemade bread making workshop there. But we're so limited on our facilities right now. But all of that can change. Yeah. More questions or?
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I told her, I was like, oh, Una, you've been doing this. But, yeah, we're all very, very appreciative of you considering this request.
Thank you. Hey. No other questions or comments? Could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, item E.
Item E, Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash fifty-six and move for its approval.
Second.
A motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for Resolution number twenty, twenty-five dash fifty-six is, which is to place a lien for outstanding utility charges against Lot Six, Block Fifty-two and Pioneer Townsites Company, first edition to Shatter, Nebraska, is surveyed, platted, and recorded. Um, the unpaid bills that they have received from the city amount to four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-two cents with three hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents being water and sewer and the one thirty-seven fifty being swans, so they have to go through the same procedures to collect their money. Um, the curb stop is inoperable, so, um, can't really shut the water off, um, without going inside and uh, the owner is DC, she died a few months ago, so. You know, we'll get resolved, but it's one of those things that'll come up and probably payment when they sell the property, but if not sooner. So, anyone have any other questions about it? If not, yeah, roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, item F on the agenda?
So, um, oh. F. So, I'll motion to, uh, to the, uh, primary plot for Tac One, Trac, Tracks One and Two. Uh, Bordeaux Creek subdivision and subdivision of part of the southwest quarter, of the southwest quarter, Section Ten, Township Thirty-three North, uh, Range Forty-eight West of the Sixth PM, Dallas County. Did I get that?
I think you got it, you're right.
Or you could've just said three sixty-two.
I forget what this P stands for. Oh, yeah. The AM stands for Meridian. And motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, uh, to approve this preliminary plat. Um, it comes from Phil and Angela Lawler. Um, and on ten acres, they have two homes and they, like, there aren't too many people, um, and they're really, really nice homes, so a little bit above the run-of-the-mill in Shatteren, so, um, would you have any other information you wanna give us?
Uh, good evening, I'm Jessica Brechner. I am the real estate broker listing the property. Um, we've had the property listed for approximately nine months. We've received quite a bit of inquiry to it. We show it pretty often. The main feedback we get from everyone is, who needs two homes? I'd buy one, but I can't, I don't know what I'd do with the other. You know, if it was split, we could, you know, probably get it sold a lot easier. Um, so with that. Um, so with that feedback being received several times, Phil and Angela went ahead and with Janet's guidance on meeting the parameters for zoning requirements, um, had the property surveyed to, um, split the two properties.
The, the configuration is a little, little odd.
It's a very odd configuration.
Is there a reason that, uh?
It has to have so many acres per the septic system. If it just, uh, split it, the logical place that you'd think along the road, it'd only ended up being one point nine two acres, I think. Um, so it needed to encompass more acreage for the, um, the requirement for acres for a septic system. So that's why we had to kind of go that route with it. And they did, um, have it surveyed split so that ownership of the road is fifty-fifty as well for the approach. That way, um, there wouldn't be any problems moving forward if somebody wanted to, say, this is my road, you can't drive across it or anything like that.
So what is the regulation about how big a property has to have for a septic system?
The city's regulations in the agricultural district is two and a half acres.
Two and a half? For parcels?
And, um, the state's regulation is three acres for a septic that isn't engineered. So they, um, they meet the regulation for an unengineered septic and the two and a half acres per parcel for our regulations for agricultural district.
And each of those properties has their own water well?
They each have their own well and septic, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
That was, uh, it was approved by the planning commission, so.
Yeah, the preliminary plat, yeah, there'll be a final plat, um, I guess after, this has not been surveyed yet, or has been survey-
Yes.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? If not, could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented in our packet.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion by me, second by Mark to approve the claims. Uh, any council members, you have any questions? I have a few. Um, Danielson Construction, where was that, that work taken place at, Tom?
Second, um, Bordeaux.
Second Bordeaux.
Was part of it, right? That's the curb and? Yeah. Oh, Second and King, yes.
Second and King?
Yes, sorry.
I'll have to go by and look.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and payment to First National Bank. I noticed a number of things on there for lodging for employees going to training and conferences and one thing or another. Could we be saving a little bit of money on sales tax if we have the hotels direct bill us? I, I know when we go to our midwinter conference with the league, those are direct billed and that bypasses rather than going, using a credit card. I, I think maybe we, and I know some, unless it's too big a hassle and the cost of the time and vol- involved maybe is offset by the-
We'll have to check with that, George, 'cause I thought once we booked underneath the city of Shatteren, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I looked at the re- the bills and it looks like that we're getting charged for.
We'll have to find out.
And I, I just want to make a note on the intro links. Um, it said PD Admin and Library Monthly Maintenance and Trouble Tickets, but it, it did include four new computers, which were roughly about six thousand dollars plus a power unit for a little hundred and something.
Backup power.
Yeah. Um, Midland Telecom, the bill says to RFD Real Fire District Number Two. I assume that maybe that, that was an error from Midland. 'Cause it clearly states on there, um. And then, what's the deal with Moil Petroleum not using the billing service? 'Cause that's where, I looked at the invoices and they're just handwritten invoices sent to us and they don't include any, that I could see, any discount or taking off the fuel tax for the, um, and I know the, the water department probably has to pay, water and sewer have to pay sales tax, but.
The, the water department does, the wastewater does it.
I, I look at those and what, what happened? Did, have we been noticed? Did Moil Petroleum say they having trouble with?
We, we had an issue where common sense is where we get our fuel.
Yeah.
And the credit cards that were issued by them were no longer valid because of the Exxon, major corporation was no longer having that being done. And so in the interim, and Jen can probably explain more of this, but in the interim, we had to have handwritten tickets written up on this and at the end of the month, all the discounts and taxes will be taken off once they send us out the invoices for those, on those particular payments that we have. In the meantime, we've just received the cards-
Yes.
-for them and so it'll go back to the old system again. But in the interim, they would not honor our old cards and so we had to do something so that we could still function as a city.
And so there is another set, sorry, general accounts payable clerk, um, for the city of Shatteren. And there is another about half a month's worth of tickets that, like the ones that are in the, with the claims.
Yeah.
And then once all that's settled for that in-between part of, with the tickets instead of using cards, then I will get ahold of my contact at Moil Petroleum up in Rapid City and find out about how to get our discount on all of that. It, it's probably gonna be backdated, but I'll make su- they said they would honor our discounts with our contract that we had.
Alright.
It's just that in-between period, we couldn't get the new cards before the old ones quit, were discontinued.
Okay. And then, um, Tyler Technologies, you need to look at that bill from what I saw, that twenty-three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents is included in that three thousand ninety-five dollars. So I think there's a duplicate payment in the, there. And I brought these bills over here if you want to look at them.
No, I think it, Tori brought that up too. Um, I think it was, it was quoted, but it was backordered, so it wasn't charged on one of the invoices. And then when that software product came in, then it was charged later. And I can look at them with you after the meeting and-
It looks like that, to me, it looks like that.
It did to me too, but we can look at it after the meeting and, and see if we agree or not. And then I can adjust if I need to.
Well, with all that being said and with the idea that we might have a correction to that one invoice from Tyler, um, do we have, anybody have any other questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a resolution to excuse Councilmember Clay Anderson.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, second by Shane to excuse Clay. He didn't know what was pass and I assume it was either personal business or maybe wheat's coming in. And I don't know. And with the weather today, I doubt if there's any wheat coming in, but maybe there is. Could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, time for the public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda may do so. Individuals are allowed a total of three minutes to speak. No takers? City manager report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just got two things that I want to just give you guys an update on. The restrooms down here at Second Main have started, working on it. And one of the things that was requested by Fuller and the electrician was that the charging units to be disabled until we can get some of that work done in a timely manner, uh, as opposed to trying to do some of those things. We don't have an exact estimate time when that, that will be done as far as it, but there will be signs and we are posting it on the radio and on our websites, letting people know that utilize those services that for the meantime, we're gonna ask that they not use those charging units so that we can move forward on the, the restrooms repaired.
They've been to second.
They have been already then, okay. So that's even changed since this morning from when I got told, so. The, uh, second thing is, is our chip seal, which was scheduled to begin where they were going to be mobilizing on August first, has been delayed by three to four weeks due to increment weather and some equipment failures that they've had. And so, uh, right now, we're just letting the public be aware of it. This is the first time. We'll have it up on our website. We'll ask the radio station to do something for us too as well. But we just wanted to let the council know that, um, that is something that got delayed a little bit on some of those things. And then, uh, we also have, the last thing I've got is we are working on getting the water line, uh, taken care of. Hennings, uh, who initially got awarded the bid, has backed out of it. And so the engineering group is talking with the second lowest bidder to see what can actually be accomplished. And once we get information, we'll let you guys be aware of all those things too as well.
Okay, Tom, I think you ought to mention, I know it's been on KCSR about the essential air service.
Oh, yes, the essential air service. Thank you. Um, August thirty-first will be the, or August, yeah, August thirty-first will be the last day for Southern Air, uh, Airlines. Uh, they are being replaced by Denver Air Connect, um, which has, um, already, they haven't reached out to us yet. I've sent emails off to them to see what they need from the city, but I haven't had any communications with them as far as any of those things. But, uh, we're hoping that that will be a seamless transition for them. Thank, uh, Southern for the services that they've been able to provide and look forward to, uh, Denver Air Connect and their, their personnel. Thank you, George.
Hey, uh, council closing comments. Start off with Kevin.
I just had a question. Was there a reason they, they stated for backing out of that, um?
The, the reason that was given was personal reasons.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, and that's something that, uh, Dave Shaft, who's our engineering group, uh, that was only information that he was given as far as that goes. So you can read into it whatever you guys want to, but that's what was given to us.
Just curious if there was a formal reason.
Is that, is that the one where their, their bid was considerably lower than everyone else's?
Yes, it was.
Mm-hmm.
And normally they lose some of their bonding money, right?
Five percent penalty.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, which is like twelve thousand something, five hundred dollars. So.
Yep.
Okay. Kevin, do you have any other co- comments?
Uh, as far as comments, uh, I, I do just have a big list in front of me and I'm gonna read it as quickly as I can, but, uh,
Hey.
we had a, what I consider to be a very successful fur trade days this year. Um, and I, we've put this out on social media and elsewhere, um, but I, I just wanted to extend thanks to, uh, the numerous people, uh, people, groups, clubs, businesses in Shatteren that helped make that happen. Uh, so in no particular order, uh, Roberts Electric, Scott Roberts for installing power for the stage, uh, Brian Pankinen for running sound at the courthouse, uh, Barbara Hockenberry for taking photos, Jeff and Donna Keenets for loaning the power from their building to power the stage, uh, Cogdill Feeds for cow panels to secure the stage, uh, Tom and Miles Bannon for hauling and setting up that stage. Uh, Museum of the Fur Trade for loaning flags, uh, for the parade of historic flags. Uh, your selling team for hosting a parade of puppies right before the main parade. And again, Miles Bannon for emceeing that puppy parade and the parade of flags. Uh, NPPD loaned us some spools to be used as tables in the downtown area. Um, Littoral Construction loaned us some snow fence to, uh, secure and mark the edge of the downtown S D L area. Swan and Keep Shatteren Beautiful helped with trash removal and cleanup. Uh, Shatteren Police Department, Shatteren Fire Department, and emergency response, uh, keeping us safe, keeping things going. Uh, Shatteren Chamber of Commerce gave in- innumerable amount of help. I can't, can't thank Gabby enough and some of the chamber ambassadors as well. Um, Classics in the Park Car Show, uh, the rendezvous with Buck Skinner's, uh, the Rotary Club for the Parade, or Rotary Club for the Buffalo Chip Throw and the Culture Run, Lions Club for the Parade, First Congregational Church for the Ice Cream Social. Teammates Mentoring ran their, uh, three-on-three basketball tournament during Fur Trade Days this year and I, I understand had great success with that. That's not the typical weekend they do that. Uh, and the Dawes County Historical Museum, uh, Historical Society and Museum for the Cemetery Tours. Uh, truly takes a, a village to raise a child, takes a city like Shatteren to put on a great event like Fur Trade Days. Um, so cannot thank all the folks enough. And if I missed you, thank you as well. That's all I got.
Very good. Now, all being said, what does the rest of us? Well, I just want to specifically thanks to Chief and his staff for keeping us safe during those, all those activities and their work during Fur Trade Days and year-round, but, um, especially when you have an event like that, um. And from my observation, the parade and courthouse lawn activity seem to be successful and that, that's kind of the extent of where I was, other than, um, I did go look at the cars during car show later in the afternoon. And I just wanted to make another thank you for the cooperation that I've received with getting some of the weeds out of the press concrete now on, uh, Third Street and Highway Twenty, so. And a reminder, Dawes County Fair is just around the corner. And I think it'll be pretty well history by the next time we meet. I'm, I'm not sure of the dates, but I think it will. So enjoy the fair.
My turn. Um, I, I think, uh, the Fur Trade Days was a good success, the, uh, um, parade was, it went pretty flawlessly, wasn't very good this year. Um, a lot of candy, um, for sure, but, uh, uh, it, it seemed to me that, uh, there was, uh, the groups of people, there was a lot more people spread out through town this year than, than there has in the past. And I like how, uh, you guys had the Buffalo Chip Toss a little earlier. It seemed like that you didn't wait till it was so hot to-
Yeah, that was a request from Rotary, um, just to have it earlier in the day.
I think it worked out a lot better too, so.
Well, I thought Fur Trade Days went, uh, very well. We've also had two bands on Bordeaux, which I think, uh, had pretty good turnouts. We have another one coming up this Thursday. Uh, The Barflies will be playing, uh, at six o'clock this Thursday. So hopefully we'll get a good turnout for that as well. Um, we had the opportunity, or Shatteren had the opportunity to host Adrian Smith, Congressman Adrian Smith, uh, here in Shatteren. Um, unfortunately, the council didn't get the opportunity to speak with him, uh, but, um, some of the community did. So hopefully we'll, the council will have an opportunity to discuss, uh, issues with them that affect our community in the future. That's all I have.
Hey. I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second that.
Motion by me, second by Shane to adjourn. Could we have roll call, please?
Alexi?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, have a good evening. Be safe out there.